This initiative provides other special revenue funding to meet program obligations related to the maintenance and support of the child support enforcement system in the Office for Family Independence Program. The spending cap for the administration of child support collections was increased to 5.5 million in public law 2013, and this is seeking to increase that.
Representative Keating.
Thank you. Commissioner, a few minutes ago, with one of the initiatives, you referenced some streamlining and improvement you're making in the eligibility systems within OFI. And if you recall, a few weeks ago, when we did orientation for the HHS committee, we had talked about the department providing us with a copy of its IT plan. I'd still like us to see a copy of that. It might be helpful for us as we're looking at the budget. But again, are there, coming up later this week, are there initiatives in the departments that have been around IT improvements that were there's a request for funding, or are all those initiatives fully funded right now?
I have to take a look. I know that there have been a number that we've been looking at, and some of those representative originally were intended to be as part of the proposal, but as we look at the analysis that still needs to occur and the forecasting of costs, I know, for instance, with the child welfare database, I know that we have been debating at what point we'll have solid numbers around which to seek some funding. So I need to take a look at that. But that was the other large system modernization that we've been looking at. The modernization within OFI, we are fairly confident that we will be able to self-fund those improvements, and of course, we are benefiting from the 90-10 management.
Thank you. Again, I think if you saw, again, the IT plan we talked about too, so it might help make it.
Yep. And I apologize if you don't have that, and I will work with folks to get a comprehensive list of what's underway and what's on the horizon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like me to go through the various language as well, provisions? Okay. So, language part, why, why? This part authorizes, and I don't have page numbers, so I don't have...
Page 17.
Thanks. This part authorizes the Department of Health and Human Services to transfer funds appropriate for state supplemental income for blind, disabled, and elderly people authorized under sections 3271 and 3274 by financial order to the Department of Health and Human Services, department-wide account.
Representative Rattler.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you explain the need for this?
So, we have had previous targets established by the legislature to achieve savings department-wide. There have been funds available within this account, but they have not been able to be used to achieve those savings because they have been restricted and have not been able to be transferred. And I'm sure others behind me can help to support additional detail around that, but that is essentially the reason.
Okay. Thank you. You know, the time when we're talking about helping the disabled, I want to make sure that we have taken money.
Right. No, I understand. That's not the intent. Part ZZ. This part does the following. It repeals the provision that requires the Department of Health and Human Services to provide a food supplement program for non-citizens who are not eligible for federal SNAP benefits based on their status as aliens under the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act of 1996. It repeals the provision that requires the Department of Health and Human Services to provide supplemental security income for non-citizens who are not eligible for federal supplemental security income based on their status as aliens under the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act of 1996. And third, it repeals the provision that requires the Department of Health and Human Services to provide financial assistance to individuals who are not eligible for temporary assistance to needy families based on their status as aliens under the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act of 1996. So these are the language pieces, obviously, that accompany the specific budget initiatives. Part triple B. This part changes the disability determination cutoff from 45 days to 90 days for applications for A based on a disability and eliminates the requirement to provide state-funded temporary medical coverage. This part also directs the Department of Health and Human Services to seek relief from the decision process required by the folk versus law consent decision. Part triple D. This part eliminates general assistance for non-citizens who are not qualified to receive such assistance pursuant to federal law. Part triple K. This part makes a technical correction to the state valuation amount reported in subsection 1B, changes the method of reimbursement methodology, and requires monthly reporting for any municipality expected to receive more than $10,000 in current fiscal year. Those are the various language changes related to the general assistance program for form proposals. With that, senators and representatives, I conclude my testimony. I appreciate the opportunity to present the governor's biannual budget for state fiscal years 16 and 17, and certainly look forward to spending the rest of the week with you.
Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the budget document on page 351, where we were before, there's a place where it says initiative eliminates 100 positions from various accounts within the Department of Health and Human Services. Was that the document, does that correspond with the document that was on our desk for the list of positions supposed to be eliminated in the budget? I was just wondering if they corresponded.
I'm not sure if that's a document that you received from us or from the Department of Administration and Financial Services, but they may have, we had to, we submitted those positions through DAPs, and they likely have submitted that to you.
Yeah, it just looks like it is from DAPs, but that doesn't correspond to this initiative in the budget document. They're not connected.
Yes, I believe those are connected, and I'll double-check. I don't have that document, so, but we'll double-check.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Representative Keating. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for what section I, could you have somebody put together for us a definition of these various terms where she would use? Non-citizens, aliens, asylum seekers, and refugees, and I have another laptop. What rules that the game are, where we expect each of those groups under federal laws?
Yes, we have developed a number of documents over the years that helps to try and decipher some of the provisions related to that federal reform to those programs and immigration law, and we'll bring those documents for your deliberations.
Thank you. And also, to the extent you know where these folks are.
Geographic, yes.
I know there are some that don't, I just don't know how many, and if they have that information, I would be happy to.
Happy to provide that.
Lori, did you?
I just wanted to say that that document that was on your desk, that is derived from information from DAPs, and it's part of the initiative you see. Sometimes it says 100, sometimes it says 101 position eliminations. Those are the positions.
Okay, but so it is correct. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Remind folks that we have 60 in front of us, some of the listeners I have, and I'm not sure if there's more. All the way, we have 20 people down in the, down in the Welcome Center. We'll be working my way down through the left side. Number one is working my way down. So since you're actually, you're 59, you've got a long ways to go down. Okay?
He's got all day.
First off, of those who have gathered in the room, can I show hands as the group has never spoken before a committee like this before? Can I see some show of hands? Only got two? No kidding? Okay, so you're all experienced. Downstairs. Okay. Reminder that everything we say, the microphone is on, is for our guests within the building and on the Internet. And there are those that do listen in and take notes to what you're saying. Also, if you're handing in printed testimony, of course, those go over to the clerks for disputation, and those are also public documents, so, you know, so everything here is out in the open. You'll also see us moving in and out. Members move in and out of committee room on a regular basis, and that is, if business in other committees may be presenting a bill, that sort of thing. So movement is not unusual, and movement for you is not unusual. Don't be scared to get up and take a break, move yourself out of the room. What I'll do is, is basically do a lineup of about five people ahead, so you know that your time is coming. We're going to be holding to a three-minute clock, let's try to hold you as close to that three minutes as possible. When you're sitting here waiting for everybody to talk, it's an eternity, but when you're at your three minutes, that three minutes goes like that. But we're going to be good until 6:30, 7 o'clock minimum. Okay? So we've got, we've got a long ways to go. First up is John White, then I have Patty Hamilton, Kathy Conmo, Sue Karen, and Dennis Marlowe, those are the first five. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, yourself. And first off, I'd like to thank the chairs and both committees for giving me the opportunity to speak, for your time and your attention. You graciously introduced yourselves, so I will introduce myself. My name is Randy White. You heard it as John, my parents did that, decided to call me by my middle name, but anyway. As far as my testimony today, it's going to be wearing three hats at the same time. I am the General Assistance Director for the City of Sanford. I am also an elected board member of the Main Welfare Directors Association, and I am a homeowner and property taxpayer in the City of Sanford. So first off, I'm going to speak mainly to part triple K, as I perceive it being an issue for our municipality. As far as the other related items of triple D and double Z, it's not a population that my city has had to address at this point, so I think there are other people here that are going to be better suited to speak to that. My main concern would be a cost shift to a municipality as a result of those actions if general assistance is not included in that measure. Continuing on, prior to my time as a General Assistance Director, which has only been for a few years, I was a police officer for 23 years, and the reason I bring that up is because I am very used to doing everything by way of reading statute ordinance and also dealing with policies. That is my incentive for doing the general assistance program in the proper legal manner, is we are a nation of laws, we are a state of laws, and without those, there is no way to fairly and equitably address those measures. My concern would be that if I am not following those, I have always understood it that my municipality would have some type of punitive measure taken against it, meaning there would be no reimbursement. I do not want to explain to my next-door neighbor why I screwed up on how I was addressing these measures and was not able to get full reimbursement as a result. I also do not want to see the person who is truly a need being neglected because I'm worried of going over a certain threshold. Right now, as you're all aware, it's a 50% reimbursement. I would have to double the assistance, the City of Sanford grants, in order to get to that point that I would receive 90%, so it's not going to happen in my lifetime unless there are radical changes. The other concern is, is that with regard to this going to the new formula, it doesn't take into account things that I can't control. An example of that was when we went to the 16-month cap on TANF benefits. It is not, I'm not here to talk about whether there should be a cap or not. Personally, I don't foresee that as being an issue, but what happened was, in that one year, my city saw a $36,000 increase in general assistance spending because a person who lost their TANF simply came to general assistance, and by law, I had to provide that assistance. So that would not be reimbursed under this formula if I go over what my six-year average is. That is one of the biggest concerns I have in this, in this situation. And also, as you had certainly stated, I heard it talked about, that we're talking about human beings, that is absolutely the case. I want to share a little piece with you. When I retired from police work, I heard the same thing from everybody. Oh, you're going to be the General Assistance Director, you're going to be dealing with the same people. It's a very insulting, very offensive way that many people choose to look at this issue. When I, I can tell you, from my own experience, I have seen maybe 1% of the clientele I dealt with as a police officer in my office, and as it turns out, they turn out to be the best clients I have that most quickly move out of the program. So I'm happy to say that we need to change our perspective on how we address these matters. It's extremely important that we do. I do see people that abuse the system. They are part of our population that we only see for a short time, and that is the way it should work, if everybody is following the same rules that are already there. There do not need to be incentives, because I'm worried that people are going to feel that it's going to be their necessity that they reduce spending, and thereby, we do have those truly needing people that are no longer going to receive that assistance. At this point, I want to wrap up, because I know you have a lot of other people that need to be curbed from, but the main thing I do want to extend out there is, in my capacity as a General Assistance Director, please feel free to reach out to me at the City of Sanford. If you ever need input from people that are on the front lines and in the trenches dealing with this every day, I would be more than happy to involve myself in that. And with that, I'll thank you again for your time, and unless there are any questions, I'm going to yield the floor to the next person.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Just want to remind folks that we do have a full house downstairs in the Welcome Center, and it'd be nice to open up some seats after you testify, to be able to have some sort of field.
So, he's saying good, you can act. Will I or not say, just when you're done testifying, if you would need? Thank you. People are very anxious to be able to be here in this room. Thank you.
I'll happily fulfill that obligation. Good afternoon, Senators Hamper and Brayke, Representatives of Keating and Rotundo, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Health and Human Services. My name is Patty Hamilton, and I'm the Public Health and Community Services Director for the City of Bangor, and in that role, I oversee general assistance among other programs. I stand before you today in opposition of the proposal that recommends change in the GA reimbursement funding formula. As I note in the testimony that's going around, the City of Bangor operates the second-largest general assistance program in Maine. With FY 2014, the program assisted 1,354 households, issuing a little over $2 million in general assistance vouchers, at a cost to Bangor taxpayers of roughly $800,000 under the current reimbursement formula. So I'm wondering, are we more lenient, are we more generous than other communities? And I can easily say, no, we're not. I can tell you that 81% of the households that received that assistance received it for five months or less, and in my mind, that means the program is working as it was intended to work as a safety net program. I can also tell you that the need for assistance won't go away if the new funding formula is adopted. The number of struggling families, the working poor, that will all remain. The difficulty in finding safe portable housing is going to continue, and the mental and physical challenges faced by many will be ongoing. According to my general assistance manager, this week alone, GA paid for 17 medications for one individual with a chronic mental condition who had lost main care. We are obligated to pay for that. I ask you, how will the proposed formula, before you enable communities like ours to address these realities, how will we support our residents without unfairly burdening our taxpayers? The general assistance caseworkers at the Health Department work very hard. They see several individuals and families per hour. They follow state statutes. As written, we had an audit recently, and we passed without many deficits. Again, we're following the rules as written. So are we more generous? Again, I would say no. The caseworkers, as it indicated, see people all day, every day. They've heard it all. They are more skeptical than most. They deny between 20 and 25% of all applications. They look for fraud, they report it when they find it. I do believe Bangor is unusual when it comes to GA. 55% of our housing is in rental units compared to 19% statewide. Our surrounding communities are small and not able to support other than a handful of jobs and housing, and we take the overflow. When people are in crisis, they seek work where housing and job opportunities exist. I think that's what we encourage, encourage, and what we expect, but I have great concerns about the legislation before you. The proposed change in policy leaves Bangor in unethical quandary. Do we continue to apply the state statutes as written and provide general assistance, knowing we'll quickly reach that lower 30% level, knowing we'll have to increase property taxes? Or do we disregard the state-established rules and deny eligible people housing, food, and medicine?
Thank you. Senator Brayke.
I'm just looking at some of the numbers that were provided to us earlier on general assistance spending in different municipalities. Now, representing the people of Auburn and looking at Lewiston, Auburn, as you were combining those numbers, do you know what some of the different practices are, or why, when you're looking at GA spent for person in poverty, that gets twice as much in Bangor as it is listed in Auburn?
Now, I really don't, I don't know if I can answer that question. I can tell you that the general assistance managers try very hard to apply the statutes as written, and they only give it to what they consider to be eligible people, and they spend a lot of time going over that. But I'm really not sure I can speak to why Lewiston, Auburn spends less. I'm sorry. I'll try to get you that information if that would be helpful.
Thank you. That'd be, that'd be...
Representative Malby.
Thank you, Senator. And thank you, Ms. Hamilton, for coming before. So I was wondering, as Keith just said, we get individuals with 17 bills. Did you refer them to any kind of art suitable assistance program, something such as needy meds or hospital-based programs?
I think they do encourage that whenever possible, so if the person, for instance, didn't have a medical provider, they would certainly hook that person up, but I believe as, with the statute as it's written, if they come in with prescriptions and they are eligible to receive funding to give those medical...
Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for your testimony, for asking good questions. Would you, if a lot of the GA, as I understand, is spent on housing costs, could the higher rate for some of the cities that are reflected in some of this data reflect a difference in housing costs in places like Portland and Bangor as opposed to Lewiston and Auburn? I mean, are your, what are your housing costs in Bangor? Is that an issue there?
It is an issue. We do have some fairly high housing costs, and there are the maximums, the GA maximums and minimums, and we have to follow those rules and land within those. So the majority of the vouchers that people get is really covered housing, and it provides 99% of that, there isn't anything left over after housing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a training team with Kathy and Pauline. All right?
Just to clarify, Patties are nicer half. So Senator Hamper, Senator Brayke, Representative Keating, Representative Rotundo, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Health and Human Services. My name is Kathy Conmo, and I'm the City Attorney of Bangor and here at the City Council of Hollywood, Seattle. Obviously, we're testifying today on behalf of the City of Bangor in opposition to the budget proposal that changes the reimbursement structure for general assistance. Just to summarize really quickly, if you were to enact the current provision, it would cost the City of Bangor $591,000 per year, just 25 cents on the mill rate. That's how it translates, since none of the requirements that we need to provide this assistance go away, it's automatic, 25 cents on the mill rate. In Bangor, it's equivalent to at least 10 to 12 discretionary positions in departments such as police, fire, and public works. But I also, I think Patty raised the question, and I want to reiterate this, since I've come to Bangor, this is my seventh time testifying on this topic in five years. So I've heard that Bangor's been inviting the folks who want GA, and so this year, a little frustrated with that constant line, I did a little research, about two hours worth, and I made some attachments for you. Research shows that Bangor not only, I haven't found any evidence that we invite anyone, but in fact, the Department of Corrections, the court systems, the mental health system have used Bangor as a primary housing source. So one of your attachments is a 14-page document, which is a little shocking. These are the people just in the last year who have been eligible for GA, who have been released from an institution in the state of Maine. Lots of them from small communities that don't have housing that can support them transportation or services. So I'll also share this, I think Senator Kate can relate to this. Of 150 registered sex offenders in the City of Bangor, 55% of them were from other communities. They were adjudicated in other communities. 45% to Bangor, through Penasquaw County. That 45% represents not only Penasquaw County, but also Piscataquis County, and anybody who came to Bangor, offended in Bangor, and then was, was, now, now they became a Bangor resident. So Bangor's doing its fair share. And I have the 14-page document. We concluded, they're put here, we found all kinds of anecdotal, just by Googling some, some things, anecdotal information. There's an article I put in there for you from a gentleman from Prentice, really wants to go back to Prentice, but he's required to stay in Bangor. He's required in just two months, seven calls from the police department, three from the police chief, and now he's on my desk. So there's a lot of impact to this that we just simply can't afford. And the changes in main care, more than 1,300 individuals receiving Suboxone and Methadone drug treatment, they're coming from communities all over northern Maine. They are, they're, now that they are no longer eligible under main care, they're qualified under GA. Our prescription drugs in December of 2013 were $1,000 a month, yet as of today, January's closing month was $21,000, so you might strike the $10,000. That was January of last year. This year, the new, the new total is $21,000 a month, and the number continues to increase. We, in 2012, met with the governor and requested meaningful change in reform of the GA at the tax request that the City of Bangor made, along with the governor's response to that. This is not meaningful reform, this is just a cost shift to the City of Bangor, to the residential property taxpayers. And so I'm going to reiterate this, and I think we've heard this over and over again, we have been auditing and in compliance year after year. The state continues to be one of the largest beneficiaries of the Bangor taxpayer in the Senate for investments, such as across insurance, and a lot of our concerts, CNN, aerospace, things that we receive no money for at all. And you guys are a recipient of the sales tax, income tax revenues. There's no return, and there's no partnership coming from the state, it's only cost shifts. And we ask you to stop shifting costs in the City of Bangor property taxpayers.
Senator Brayke.
Thank you so much for being here. Two questions. First, do you know at what point in the, as the general assistance program is currently set up, at what point in the year does Bangor generally hit the point where it gets that 90% reimbursement?
First quarter.
In the first quarter?
Yep.
Okay. And my second question, same question as I asked the speaker before. Looking at these numbers between Lewiston, Auburn, and Bangor, Lewiston, Auburn actually has about 3,500 more people living in poverty than Bangor, yet Bangor spends twice as much as Lewiston, Auburn on general assistance. Do you know what some of the contributing factors are to that?
I would guess it's a sophisticated clientele that's left of the corrections system and knows how to access it. That's what you guys are telling them, you're problem, and homeless shelters, and tell them how to access the system.
Okay.
I would guess that's the big difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Sue Sharon, and then let me read out some names after that. Dennis Marlowe, Richard Berman, Reverend Dave Wilson, and then Daniel Lundgren.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's always nice to see you.
Thank you. I have to pass out my testimony and the mayor, Robert McDonald's testimonies. Senators Hamper and Brayke, Representatives of Rotundo and Keating, and members of the Appropriations and Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Sue Sharon. I am the Social Services Director for the City of Lewiston, and I am providing testimony on behalf of the City of Lewiston on parts KKK and ZZ of Governor, which is proposed by annual budget. The City of Lewiston opposes proposal KKK. The proposal has the potential of rewarding municipalities that have low average and average expenditures, regardless of why the expenditures are such, and penalizing meets the penalties that have above-average expenditures, but for good reasons. The reality is that smaller communities expend less because they serve fewer people. It doesn't necessarily mean that they are operating a physically responsible program. Larger communities expend more, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they are operating a physically irresponsible program. More people are served because we have service center communities. We offer housing, medical facilities, and other social services that GA recipients need. Additionally, certain immigrant populations that are relocating into Maine have a direct impact on the general assistance expenditures for a handful of the larger municipalities. Service center communities also spend more money on administrative costs, and these costs are not reimbursed by the state. Yet the state receives revenue from the mightiest of the municipalities recoup on municipal administrative time, and it's the larger municipalities that recoup the largest amount of money for the state. For the six-year period in which this reimbursement proposal is based, the City of Lewiston recouped over $336,000 in SSI retroactive reimbursements and over $33,000 in other reimbursements, such as workers' compensation and accident claims. Not only did the city receive the over $336,000, but the state received that same amount of money for the municipality doing most of the administrative work, and they received for the municipality doing most of the administrative work, and they received half of our other reimbursements. Lewiston's general assistance expenditures have increased over the years due to the refugee influx, a growing asylum seeker population, service provider funding reductions, and state and federal cuts. However, FY 2013 and FY 2014 expenditures decreased even with the existing variables. Regardless of the increase in expenditures prior to receiving the 90% reimbursement for one and a half months in FY 2010, the last time the city received the 90% reimbursement was in the early 90s. Since FY 2010, the city has received the 90% reimbursement for only the last two to two and a half months of each fiscal year. Lewiston has long been recognized for operating an effective and cost-efficient program, and we oppose using additional local property taxes to support a state-mandated program. Just a little mention for proposal ZZ. The City of Lewiston is neither for nor against. The council hasn't taken a vote on this. Our concern is that if proposal ZZ is passed without proposal DDD, it's yet another cost shift to the community, just like the TANF 60, when they took away main care for asylum seeker adults and eliminated SNAP and TANF for folks who have work documents. Furthermore, proposal ZZ is adopted without proposal DDD. DDD, general assistance expenditures, will increase due to the cost shift, and as a result, the state's reimbursements to the municipalities will also increase. Proposals that limit cost-saving benefits only to the state and shift the cost to the municipalities are inadequate. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Senator Brayke, and can I just remind folks too that we have over 65 people who are still waiting to be heard, and the folks sitting downstairs, we will go as quickly as we can, and we will find limited questions, and during the testimony, if you need. Senator Brayke?
Thank you. Well, first let me say it's wonderful to see you here.
Thank you.
And, you know, I've been asking this question to a couple of folks, and maybe Reverend Lewisson, you might be able to help answer it. Do you know what, as we've seen in other municipalities that general assistance spending has seemed to get away from us, but we haven't, it doesn't seem like we've seen those similar trends in the Lewiston, Auburn area. Do you know of any particular reasons why we don't, why we are seeing this disparity between municipalities like Lewiston, Auburn, and other municipalities like Portland and Bangor?
Well, Portland may well have the shelters, so there's a cost there for general assistance, and they have higher housing, higher overall maximums than us, and higher housing maximums as well. So that plays a big role.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Markle, and then Richard Berman. Good afternoon. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. And in the interest of being brief, I won't use the formal introductions, and I'm not going to read what I'm distributing to you. I'm just going to make a couple of salient points in one attempt at humor upfront. I run one of the larger shelters in the state in Bangor, and I've lived in Bangor as well. For the last four years, I've lived in Hampden, and now serve on that town council. And my point in this is, I can be an outlier in this framed conversation at both ends of this, with Bangor and Hampden. In my honest opinion, regardless of town, the GA reimbursement proposal, as I believe is identified and labeled by KKK, is an ideologically-driven blunt weapon. It talks about money more than it talks about people. At the core of this, municipalities would be punished if they abided by law and had to meet an unforecast level of need. And it seems to me that the least the state could do would be to act responsibly and help out where needed, and make this a partnership rather than a fight and a separation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Berman, and then Reverend Gabrielson, and then Daniel Under, and then Father Seedy.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon to all of you, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. I am Richard Berman. I live in Cape Elizabeth, and I am a real estate golfer, founding member of Golfers Collaborative, one of the biggest real estate development firms in the state. I am here opposed to any legislation that would eliminate general assistance for our asylum seekers, our refugees, our immigrants, our new Mainers. And I'm appalled from an economic development standpoint. I see general assistance as an investment in our economy, in Maine's economy. And I'd like you to think about this. It's an investment that's going to pay dividends, folks, in the short term and in the long term. In the short term, this money that's being given out in GA, vouchers, whatever, doesn't disappear, doesn't go into a black hole and never be seen again. It gets dispersed right back into our economy. Our new Mainers eat food, just the way I, maybe not as much as I do, but they do. Shawes and canapes, love them. They buy clothes, they rent apartments. The landlords are very happy, the LLDs have, you know where I'm going with this. The money goes right back into the economy. It supports the businesses that support them. These are the businesses that are paying taxes that the GA comes out of. By the way, and I benefit from this too, in Portland, I have a development that I have commercial space. So it's not only are they consuming, they're starting businesses. And I rent the Peace Mall, a home in Hager, and it's the only place in Portland, one of the only places you can get camera. So they're interested in this. On the long term, it's more important. They are what's going to build our work. Governor LePage has said that we have more people dying in Maine than being born, and he's right. Losing population or an aging population.